All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special meeting of Commissioners' Court, our second Monday evening meeting of the month. And it is six o'clock straight up, and let's begin with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance, if you will.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful to be able to gather together tonight to conduct county business, and we ask for your divine guidance, Lord, as we make decisions that impact the people of this fine county. We just ask that you grant us wisdom and the ability to make the right choice, Lord. We just ask your blessing upon this Commissioners' Court, upon those that are here in attendance tonight. Take us all home safely tonight. We ask you in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation, united, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. All right, we will hope for no sound or video problems tonight, but if you'll notice, we've now got microphones for each of the Commissioners up here. We hope that you will be able to hear us, and we hope there won't be any undue feedback coming through the system while we tweak the volume levels. We think we have it right. Also, at the back of the room, we now have a camera that will be recording audio and video of our meeting. Not that it's visible immediately on the Internet, but after we upload it, hopefully over the next couple of days, you will be able to access a video copy along with audio on the Internet from the Titus County website. And we've got it where it's all, each of the Commissioners can be seen, and the tops of the heads of those of you in the first couple of rows. We have cordless portable microphones here at the podium and one down here on the desk that normally would be used by Carl Johnson. Carl and his staff are out of town at training today and tomorrow. They will not be back until Wednesday. If anyone would like to speak, I'm going to ask that, as a bare minimum, that we get you a microphone in your hand. I would prefer that you come up to the podium. And normally, that's the way that we do it, but sometimes there are those of you that prefer to sit in your seat, and we will respect that, and we will pass a microphone back to you. And Ray, welcome from the Tribune. You're filling in for Lou tonight, who's filling in for Bob tonight, who's on vacation, which I'm sure he needed. So, welcome, and we will answer any questions you've got afterward, if you have any, okay? All right, let's begin with item...
I wanted to thank Sean for working on and asking...
Well, tell it to the mic.
Okay. I want to thank Sean for being able to come here and get this stuff in. He started last week, and he told me he thought they would have it in, and I appreciate all the work that everybody's put into this. It's much better, and you're able to hear, I think you're able to hear out there, and it just makes it better for everybody. And again, I want to thank him for working so hard and getting it done.
Well, let's give some credit to Newman Electronics, who actually did most of the wiring in this room. K-Bro turned that aspect over to Newman Electronics. Dennis was up here late Friday and has been up here a good bit of the day today to make sure everything was functional tonight. I think it all sounds good, and we'll hope that the video's going to look good as well. Item number one, public comments and/or requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. I have one public participation form that has been completed, Mr. Weldon Miller. Mr. Miller, welcome, and I will ask that you come up here to the podium, please, sir. And you are, you're up.
Thanks. Judge Lee, in the mission of the court, I appreciate very much the opportunity to speak briefly to you tonight. I am Weldon Miller, owner of Everybody's Furniture here in Mount Pleasant. The purpose of my appearance before the court this evening is to express appreciation to a group of people in one part of our county government that has really been of tremendous help to our company in a financial way. In the remarks that I make, I do not intend to, in any way, to diminish the lack of importance or value of any of our other public service. We're fortunate to have many good women and men who serve the citizens of our county and their performance of various important services. There are a lot of good things that could be said about them, but for this occasion, I'd like to single out our county attorney's office for special commendation. From the prospect, from the perspective of Everybody's Furniture, the services we receive from the county attorney's office are one of our most valued assets. In my opinion, our county attorney has done an excellent job in selecting and maintaining a staff that is conscientious and is efficient. And I'd like to publicly thank John Mark Coburn for his leadership. A good organization does not just happen, and it only remains that way because of the cohesive values that are instilled in each person as they work together for a common cause. In the process of providing furniture appliances, bedding, and electronics to our customers, we offer a financing program that we, that we, to those we think are creditworthy. Unfortunately, at times, we found ourselves unable to collect and account due to various situations. Sometimes those who owe us move out of our geographical area and will not respond to our telephone or our written communications. After we have exhausted a reasonable amount of effort to collect monies or to gain control of merchandise that we have financed, we've been able to turn to our county attorney's office for help as a secured creditor. Our primary contact person in that office has been Kristen Fraser. She has a great personality, she's always friendly, always helpful. She is highly successful in locating those that we've lost contact with. She pursues each case with, until the matter is resolved, out of court, or she continues through the court process until there is a resolution. Kristen has an unusual knack and ability for the work that she does. And in my opinion, she is truly an asset to the county attorney's office and to the merchants that she assists. All the staff of our county attorney's office is top-notch. The other staff members include Kim Beard, Paul Lindsay, and on every occasion, we have found the entire staff being courteous, willing, and effective. And collectively, they have been responsible for recovering literally $1,000 owed to our company. From my observation, they are fair with the debtor, they give them a reasonable opportunity to care, to take care of their financial obligations without legal action, but when necessary, they proceed with the legal resources that are available. And I'd like to thank the court for the funds, the equipment, and the technology that you may have owed to the county attorney's office to enhance the productivity of a dedicated staff. And as they continue to serve the citizens of Titus County, I hope that you'll stand with them and support them in the good job they do. On behalf of Everybody's Furniture, I offer my sincere thanks and appreciation to John Mark, Paul, Kim, and Chris for their dedicated service and for the manner in which they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's great to hear, and I think we've got here tonight, John Mark is here, and golly, you're all here. That's great. I might have dropped a bug in the right ear. Would y'all stand, just for those of you in the audience that may not know, I know most of you know John Mark. We've got Paul Lindsay there on this side, in the middle is Kim Beard, and on the, next to the window is Chris Fraser. And, uh... Thank you again. I have the benefit of getting to work with those folks, and so I know what you're talking about, but I appreciate you taking out the time to come and address the court.
Thank you.
You may be, you may be. Come back any time.
Thank you, Weldon.
Anyone else? All right, item number two, considering possibly approved minutes from our July 8th regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Judge, I've taken a look at those, and I approve the acceptance...
All right, and I have two. I will make the second on that, the motion by Commissioner Hinton, and I second all those in favor of approval of last meeting's minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and there are none. Thank you. Item number three, status report on Titus County pass-through projects, and tonight we have with us, from Houston, Texas, and Pate Transportation Partners, Mr. Mark Heidecker to make our presentation. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. Judge, Commissioners, good to see y'all this afternoon. One of these mics is still in bad feedback.
Will you turn that one off? There's, there's, right now, there's no need, there's a, if you'll just switch it, pull it all the way back to the back. Let's see if that's the cause of the problem.
Let's see if that's it. If not, we'll start over. Good afternoon. It's been a little bit since I've been here. I know we've sent some status reports over the last few Commissioners' Courts for some updates on the pass-through program. Again, my name is Mark Heidecker. I'm the Development Manager for PTP on the three pass-through projects that Titus County is doing, which is US 271, FM 2348, and then FM 1,000, which we have now renamed FM 4,000. Briefly, on 271, under contract administration, currently, all of our subcontractors, we have all their insurances, all that's up to date. Currently, there are several subconsultants and the prime out there working, which includes Highway Pavement Specialties, Indus Construction, which is a DVE disadvantaged business, Southwest Environmental, Interstate Barricades and Markings, Lone Star Barricades, Mia Corp., North Texas Contracting, RK Hall, Williams Brothers, TJ Lambert, Texas Traffic Control Systems, and Trevway. Currently, right now, PTP has received all DVE reports for the month of May at this time, and Williams Brothers have currently met approximately 50% of their DVE commitment to date. Right now, we have all certified payrolls in as well, verifying that all subconsultants are being paid the minimum wage rate and their rate that they're allowed for working under that position that they're under. With the last pay estimate right now, Williams Brothers is approximately 81.98% complete with the project. That's in terms of money for the contract right now. They've also been paid through the month of June 25th, as well as all copies of the pay estimates, and documentation has been forwarded over to the area office with Tech Stop for their review. We also got notice last week, Friday, that FHWA and Tech Stop Local Government Office will be onsite Wednesday, July 24th, to perform an audit on all three projects, 271, 2348, and FM 4,000. For 2348, pretty much same as 271, we do have all subcontractors' insurance, they have all been verified, they are all up to date as well. We have Howard &amp; Sons out there working steadily, JW Paines out there as well, along with Southwest Environmental, Striping Technologies, Tech Stop Construction, Penola Sign and Barricade, RK Hall and United Dentists. We do have all their certified payrolls in as well, they are all up to date. Currently, right now, the project sits at 75.96% complete. They are scheduled to be finished on time, within budget, luckily for us, and so we're hoping within the next 90 days, we'll be able to start putting traffic on that road out there. So, I was just out there this evening, they are laying the last bit of steel coat, and then they'll be ready for the final phase of asphalt. Some of the signs are up there already. Before we start hearing complaints, there are some speed limit signs. In one direction, it says 60 miles an hour, in another direction, it says 30 miles an hour. Not for sure why, that was Tech Stop's speed limit, we are addressing that with Tech Stop right now, we will get that addressed. I can promise you, it's not going to stay at 30 miles an hour in any direction out there. As we mentioned, the DVE goal, Howard &amp; Sons has met approximately 32% of that, so some of their DVE contractors are going to be doing some of the striping, signage, and things like that, so we'll see that towards the end of the project. As I mentioned, FHWA and the Tech Stop Local Government will be auditing that project this week. FM 1,000, they are underway. We've got their insurance, everything up to date on all contractors on the job. James Construction Group out of Louisiana is the prime. They've also teamed up with Southwest Environmental, Jacob Construction, FBL and Associates. We have all their certified payrolls as well, and they've been paid up through the month of June 25th as well. And we forwarded all copies of the pay estimate to Tech Stop for them to have with their records in their review process. Environmental on the project, only for US 271, we have an update. Mr. Terry Plucker, he is our environmental specialist, he has completed the annual monitoring on the gas sites we found on the old Cameron Auto Salvage Yard. We have turned in that report to TCQ. We do have confirmation that TCQ received the report, but they have not reviewed the report as of yet. We will be checking this week for status and update. Hopefully, we're looking to remove the monitoring wells off that site and totally be done with all that monitoring at this time. Also, we have the final archaeological report for the 271, which is ready to review by Tech Stop Environmental and the Texas Historic Commission, which sent that over to them as well, waiting for their comments and suggestions on that. We're also preparing an additional copy to send to the Native American Graz Protection Act formation, and their consultants will be reviewing that, and then there'll be a meeting set up with the Cato Nations of Oklahoma, which we hope to have by the end of the month. So, they're trying to get that wrapped up this week. Engineering, US 271, everybody will notice that we did a traffic switch out there by the funeral home. We have two-way traffic now in front over there, they're starting to work on the northern side. During the traffic switch, it was decided between PTP, Tech Stop, and Williams Brothers with Prime Contractor, that opening the intersection at County Road 4530 and US 271 would create an unsafe traveling situation, just due to there not being any turning lanes and not enough room to really slow down and allow people in and out of the intersection there. The detour route, while it does use a county roadway, is felt to be a much safer route. We're asking pedestrians to please use that route. It will be safer for the traveling public, and, you know, hopefully, you know, we can avoid any accidents, you know, by not opening that intersection. Also, some residents have asked about the speed limit signs on the northbound frontage roads where two-way traffic is now traveling. Between the funeral home and the firework stand, right now, there is no speed limit. That doesn't mean you go out there, drive as fast as you can. We're asking people to be cautious. There are orange and black signs that are precautions that give you a speed limit, and we're asking you to adhere to that. Once the traffic adapts to the, to the traffic switch out there, we will be doing a traffic study, we will then go to Tech Stop, get them to petition the commission, and then we will get posted speed limit signs, which would be enforced then by the law. So, we're just asking everybody, slow down, be cautious. It is a work zone out there, but we're working to get the speed limit signs set, but we will need Tech Stop to help with that. The last thing is the closing of 899, and how long do we expect to see it closed? I know a bunch of people have been asking about that. At this time, we're expecting 899 to be closed to approximately the end of September. Currently, the paving crews have been focused on the south end of the project and are now working their way up from the south to the north. The other reasons we're keeping it closed at this time is the bridges to be completed, we want to get the deck, port, and the rail done, so Williams Brothers is not having to perform any of these operations in the live traffic. So, hopefully, by the end of September, we'll be seeing that open again. Little update on construction, where we are as far as the projects go. US 271, it's a 663-day calendar. So far, 468 days have been charged to the job through July 19th. I hate to come up here and give people dates of when traffic will be on there, but I can tell you, 271 is moving along very rapidly. Don't be surprised if you don't see traffic out there by the end of the year or the first quarter at the latest, we would say. So, you know, look for that coming here in the future. Retaining walls, 1, 2, 3, and 4, between County Road 2040 and 4530, and the retaining wall number 5, all that's been completed. We've also been completing the setting of the panels on the project as well. Bridge construction, we've been working on several of the bridges around the area. Wetland 6, wetland number 2, FM 899, the railroad, FM 127, FM 1,000, County Road 2040, and Southwest 48, which was County Road 4530. There is currently one structure crew left working on those, they're quickly wrapping that up. Now, wetland 2, the substructure, the piles, the butts, and the caps have all been complete, and the concrete bridge beams are in place as well. Note that the bridge decks for both northbound frontage road and southbound frontage road have been poured to date. On 899, you will see the substructure, the shafts, columns, caps, abutments are complete as well. Concrete bridge beams are scheduled to be hung toward the end of this month, we're just waiting on them to be delivered to the project. The UPRR, we've got the shafts, columns, caps, and abutments done as well. Right now, we're just waiting to hang the beams, so those beams will be delivered at the same time 899 is, so we'll be seeing cranes, I think I was out there today, and they were starting to level the ground to bring the cranes in at this time, so we'll all be having cranes on the project tomorrow, the next day for sure. FM 127, it's complete, and the concrete bridge, big, bridge beams are in place at this time. The bridge decks have both been poured for the northbound and the southbound frontage roads as well. FM 1,000, the bridge deck's been poured as well, all the beams are in place, that bridge is pretty much complete. County Road 2040, we have the shafts, columns, caps, and abutments complete, and the concrete bridge beams are in place only for spans 1, 2, 6, 7, and 8. Williams Brothers is scheduled to hang the steel girders over the railroad and US 271 before the end of July. Spans 7 and 8 have been poured for County Road 2040 as well. County Road 4530, that bridge, all the concrete bridge, bridge beams are in place as well, the bridge deck has been poured also, so that bridge is pretty much wrapped up, except for some of the railing and that, that will need to be done. The bridge crew is also pouring all support slabs, sleeper slabs, and approach slabs at the ends of all completed bridge decks at this time. The contractor has begun tying in steel for the concrete rails that I mentioned on the completed bridge decks, and now that all traffic has been switched to the northbound frontage road, Williams Brothers is scheduled to start moving in cranes for the placement of the large steel girders that I mentioned before. Line cement stabilizing base and bond breaker has been placed on approximately 95% of the main lanes and frontage roads, except for Phase 2 on the north end, which is scheduled to begin tomorrow. The entire storm center, storm sewer is complete for Phase 1 and 2 construction. The only remaining storm sewer is a few of the driveways located around State Highway 49. There's currently one slipform paving concrete crew on the job at this time, and one handpaving crew on the project. The slipform paving crew is pouring northbound and southbound frontage road at FM 1,000, and they're also pouring the ramps and intersections at FM 1,000. The main goal right now for the slipform crews to tie in all the ramps and the frontage roads throughout the project. The main lane concrete paving is approximately 90% complete from the south end to the north end of the project. Williams Brothers dirt crew is placing embankment for all driveway locations at this time. We've not got around to putting in all the driveways, some landowners have called asking if we'd left a couple of them off, and they're working on getting it. Some of them, they're skipping, they'll come back and get to, but if you had a driveway or we promised you a driveway in the right-of-way taking, we will get the driveway built up to the right-of-way line. If there's a discrepancy in elevation, we may have to go back on the property a little bit to smooth it out, but otherwise, the driveway will be installed. TJ Lambert's a dirt contractor, he's completed approximately 99% of the embankment on the project. The excavation stands at about 90%, with most of the remaining to be performed on the very north end of the project, between US 67 and IH 30 on Phase 2. This excavation and the removal of the concrete and asphalt have begun in Phase 2 and are almost completed. They're scheduled to start placing lines this week, which they have begun today. Trevway has poured the slope paving under 1,000, County Road 2040, Southwest 48, and 127, and they're currently pouring riprap right now, which is the slope from the embankment down to the ground level on FM 899 and Wetland 2. Micro construction has begun the drill shafts for the placement of the small and large roadside signs, as well as the overhead signs, which you'll see. Traffic control on 271, on the north end of the project, is still shifted onto the, to the new concrete paving to allow for the construction of Phase 2. Also, on 899, that was closed as of February 27th, and it has already been excavated, line base, and asphalt paving, and 899 is scheduled to be reopened sometime in late As we mentioned, on the south end, at County Road 2040 and the south end of the project, we've switched to the new northbound frontage road over there. This has closed the current lanes to allow the hanging of the steel girders at County Road 2040. And then at FM 3417, traffic has been reopened to all lanes. That ends up with 271. For FM 2348, has a contract, contract duration of 383 days. They, we've allowed them to work 312 days to date, got a little over 60 days left as of July 19th. As I mentioned, they are scheduled to have it completed on time and have traffic out there, so within the next couple of months, you know, two to three months, we should have traffic going on 2348. The drainage structures, embankments, line fly ash, and the second lift of base material are all completed on FM 2348 from State Highway 49 to US 67. The contract is completed, the prime coat is currently placing the first course of surface, they're supposed to wrap that up this week, and then they'll expect approximately two weeks to put the final lift on of the base, of the asphalt coat for the entire project. They're going to start placing the line fly ash on Phase 2 on US 67 today, that was started. The substructures for the bridges, the columns, the shafts, the abutments at UPRR are all completed at this time. The bridge deck is poured as well, and the fencing contractor is out there right now putting up the fence, not to allow people to throw things over, they don't want to jump onto the railroad or anything of that, which should be done by the end of the week as well. Construction of the entire storm sewer is complete throughout the entire project. Subcontractor for Howard Striping Technology has installed the warning signs for the intersection at 1,000, as well as FM 2348, and poured the drill shafts for the signal poles at 67 and State Highway 49. The signal poles for 49 have been installed, and this intersection should be in operation sometime in July. Note, as requested by Tech Stop, the signal will remain in flashing mode until 1. So, what we're saying is, we have a signal, we've installed it, it's just going to flash at this time. Once the traffic gets to a certain point where a light is deemed to be turned on and in operation, that's when we'll turn the light on, there's a signal on for operation once we've done the traffic study and Tech Stop's approved. So, right now, you'll just see the light flashing at this time. Mowing of the winter grass has begun, as well as placement of the permanent seed. We have got to establish permanent grass on the entire three projects before Tech Stop will accept it. You will see them shooting hydro mulch, you know, backfilling and topsoil. A lot of the grass out there right now is temporary seeding, they're now going out putting the permanent seeding, so hopefully, we'll get a little bit more rain and we can get the grass growing, because I know we're short on months for growing grass, I would believe. And so, traffic control for 2348, the traffic on 67 has been switched to the south of US 67, and is still in two lanes. This is allowed for the start of Phase 2 construction, which is well underway. The storm sewer is complete, as we mentioned, and Phase 2 construction is scheduled to be complete late September or early October at the latest. FM 4,000, this is, the contractor is James Construction. They've got a little bit of a slow start, but the, the contract duration is 383 days. They've already used up approximately 30 days at this time, charged through May 24th on our calendar. James, I drove the project today, they have got pretty much the footprint of the road cut in, they've got the right-of-way cleared, they're laying some pipe right now for some storm drain and so forth, you'll see if you're out there. Contractor has completed the prep right-of-way, pretty much all the way up to FM 1735, and the contractor has begun their dirt operation and are currently excavating and placing embankment for Hart Creek to FM 1735. As I mentioned, the pipe crew is currently placing cross curver, cross curvers from Cross Creek to FM 2348, and the contractor has completed the installation of the wooden mats at Hart Creek for the work road to construct the bridge. Southwest Environmental has been placing rock filter dams and steel fence for the protection of the creek and the wetlands. And the permanent closing of Tennyson Road to two, through traffic has taken place. Traffic is no longer to travel to full winds of Tennyson Road. We've had problems with that, the commissioner has installed gates, we've done a lot of things to try to keep traffic off there, but fortunately, people have removed the gates, they tore them down, they've thrown them in ditches, so we're doing what we can to keep traffic off. The road is closed. If a police officer catches you out there, it could be a ticket, we're asking you, please, stay out of Tennyson Road, it is closed at this time. We do not need traveling public, there's going to be big vehicles working out there, trucks hauling dirt. The last thing we need is for some accident with people, individuals traveling up and down. I know that's a short... I know that's a shortcut to get through there. It's a lot easier. We'd be better off if the traveling public would adhere to the signs. It's closed, and that's the reason we have barricades up there. You know, we try to replace them. They're being thrown off into the ditches, but we need to try to stay off as much as possible. Utility updates. We've got a few utilities we're moving. Center Point Buoy Cast in the city is, they've started their water crew out there. They were on another project, so they got a little bit delayed, but they're out there currently right now making the relocation of the water line they have, and they hope to be out of the way before any delay on the construction side. As far as that, that ends my update for the three projects. I'll answer any questions or, you know? I'm sorry?
Mark, only thing I would like to say is, I really thought Bobby and the crews out there, when they made the traffic switch, really went well.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I thought it went as smooth as it could go and everybody just, everything just went great. I appreciate the Sheriff's Department, because they had some deputies patrolling out there.
Most definitely, for helping us with all that. You know, without the deputies, we couldn't do it, you know? I mean, it's not an easy thing to move traffic from one side to the other. You know, it's difficult. It's difficult to drive around a construction project, but the residents here of Titus County have really taken into it and really slowed down and heeded the warnings of our contractors. And we all want to thank everybody for that.
Commissioners, any questions for Mark while he's here? Anyone in the audience have a question for Mr. Heidecker? We appreciate you taking the time, coming up from Houston. Are you going to be here tonight?
I'm going to be here tonight and tomorrow. I have a few meetings and then meet with some of the commissioners. So if anybody needs anything. Also, Bobby Dew is our construction manager. He's on the project every day. He lives here. He's the president of Titus County. If anybody needs anything, we have an office at the old fire station. The door is always open. If he doesn't have the answer, he will find somebody or he will get with me. But we will address your concerns to the best of our ability and we'll give you some answers.
Let me say thank you to you and your staff for talking to some of our upset citizens who have homes and businesses that have been negatively impacted. Some have been greatly impacted. Not to slight any of them, they've all, you know, everybody, what's important to somebody may not be important to us. We may not even think about it. But I know you've been dealing with some upset folks, and you all keep in mind that there are some businesses that are suffering, folks that have been dislocated, traffic's been routed around them during this construction phase. And so, you know, remember those businesses and don't quit doing business with them just because they're a little bit harder to get to. You can still get to everybody, but nonetheless, they have been impacted.
Yes, sir, Judge. And you're right. You know, there's a lot of businesses out there that have been affected by construction. And construction is never easy. And for those businesses to stay and operate, they need citizens like yourself to keep patronizing them and showing up and buying gas or eating at their restaurant. But we do appreciate you going there. They would like to see you there. We're on the phone with them day in and day out, trying to make access easier. It may take a few more minutes to get in there, but please be patient. Our contractors are working as fast as they can to get everything back, to make it as smooth a transition as possible.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Judy, come on up.
I just wanted to ask if there were some signs that could be put up. I came in this afternoon from Mount Vernon on Highway 67, and it tees into the new center barricade. And I, I mean, it comes up on you fast, and there's nothing on that center barricade. And the thought that ran through my mind was, someone could be, at night, coming down Highway 67 and hit that center barricade and not realize it's there.
Is there not still a light there?
It's a red light.
I mean, I drove up to it the other day, there was a red light and I had to wait.
Well, there's a red light, but I'm just saying, if the light were green or whatever, and they, you know, just going straight on through, not, if someone from somewhere else, seems to me there ought to be some reflectors.
And I could look at that, if there's some reflectors or something to help warn people, but I'm sure you're going to have to make a turn.
Yeah, red light's one thing, green light's another.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. No problem. Thank you.
Good point. That red light doesn't help much when it's green. All right, anybody else? All right, thank you. Mark, appreciate it. Item number four, considering possibly approved setting, I thought, do you have a copy of that, Ray? I think you do. Okay. Considering possibly approved setting fees for the 2014 fiscal year for civil services provided by the sheriffs and constables. I made inquiries of those, and they said that the fees were appropriate and, as compared to comparable counties, we are right in line and no changes are recommended. If you would like to see what some of these are, we've got $75 for subpoenas and summons, writ of attachment at 150, writ of garnishment at 100. These fees are, we're recommending that they stay the same as the prior year. If you would like to see these, I can pass this down to you. So I will entertain a motion if you are prepared to approve that. They are the same. No changes, and that's from our constables and sheriff's office.
Make a motion with approval.
Motion by Commissioner Hinton, second by Commissioner Fields, to approve setting these fees with no change for the new fiscal year coming up. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, and there are none. Item number five, considering possibly approved allocating space in the annex for juvenile probation to conduct after-school and evening educational classes for juveniles and parents. And I will welcome Jill Tucker, the head of our juvenile probation office, to tell us a little bit about what you're proposing, at least the program, and I'll tell them about the space that we have talked about.
Yes. In September, we're wanting to start an after-school and evening program for our juvenile delinquents that are referred to our department and the parents for parenting classes. And we're going to do video programs and counseling with them after school. And we can't do those programs in the time they get from out of school till the time the courthouse closes. So we were looking for an office to provide those services to those families and juveniles. We had looked at doing it in our office on the fourth floor, but since this courthouse closes at 5:00, we didn't think the security of leaving the courthouse open until, say, 7:00 at night would be wise. So we were looking for an office that would be more secure for our offices.
And I had asked Jill about that situation, and it was not affordable to leave somebody at the door from after 5:00 until 7:00. So we had to think of an area that would provide access for the general public, yet would be safe enough where we wouldn't have to have somebody monitoring in and out traffic during that after 5:00 time. And what we have come up with for your consideration is to use the newly created law library. If you will recall, we put in a $1,500 wall and door and special access doorknob in the back area of the annex where the break room is, and that project is just about complete. Jill would ideally like to have two areas. And so, the good part about that law library is there is limited access into that room that could be monitored by Jill and her staff. And then the group of parents or children that need to be separated could sit in there in the break room area where we have the Christmas meal, for example. And her customers would come and go through the rear glass doors of the annex that go out to the parking area. And she wouldn't have to have a person monitoring that door, because they would be able to see that door. And we would provide signage for those that came in, directing them to the appropriate place there. I spoke with John Mark about what he thought about making that law library available to this program. My only concern still is, will we be interrupting attorney's time in that law library from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.? If we are, we can always adjust and move out of that law library and use only the annex break room for her programs. She would also like to put up a wall-mounted TV, is that right, to show these programs? And that would be better protected inside that locked door of the law library. John Mark, you have any comments on this project?
I don't see any real inconvenience for a couple hours, like three times a week, is that right? Two to three times a week for a couple of hours. I think it's a good use of the space. My only thought would be is, we did talk about this before, but having the security camera that we have in a lot of the other areas of the courthouse, we might put in there, because we will have, these books are valued at $8,000, and they're easily, they're real thin, like the Bible type paper, real thin, they easily be torn out. I don't know what, how closely Jill's going to be watching, I don't know. That would be my only, my only concern, is the value of those books and how easily they are damaged. And that's something we never talked about before, is putting one of those little, like we have in there, pretty much everywhere.
I did grab a couple of cabinet cases, or excuse me, cabinet modules from the appraisal district and have had them moved into the law library. These have doors on them. We could at least put some of these books, or all of these books, inside those cabinets with the doors closed, so it's not as obvious what they are. But I guess we'll have to rely heavily on Jill and her staff to make sure that they don't mess with the computer that will be in there and those books that will be in there. And again, if we run into a problem using that space, we can always say, off limits to the law library. You have to stay in the break room area. There are two sides, one on either side of the stairway that would make somewhat of a natural barrier for those two activities that are going on. But for the time being, I'd like to see us be able to use that law library, if you're okay with it.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Questions?
Is there a restroom? What restroom will they use?
The, the public restroom that's accessible from the break room. In other words, the one and only restroom that's in the facility.
Is it accessible?
Any other questions, comments about this? Okay.
Make a motion with allow them to use the break rooms.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Hockaday to allow the law library and the break room area of the annex to be utilized by juvenile probation for their after-school education. Second by Commissioner Hinton, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, and there are none. All right. Thank you, Jill, John Mark, Chris, Kim, Paul. Yes, sir.
Still have a question? I thought you had a question. Okay, I'm sorry.
Item number six, considering possibly approved, the appraisal district settlement with Pilgrim's Pride for the litigated years 2009, 10, 11, and 12. I received notification from and had a conversation with Geraldine from the appraisal district last week regarding their settlement on the Pilgrim's Pride lawsuit. I'd like to read, I asked her to give me a narrative so that I could read to you what this is in regards to, but before I do that, let me make a slight correction here. The potential cost to the county of $173,894 is overstated by $44,000. She had given me two figures, and $44,000 was included in the $129,894, and I misunderstood and added that as a separate piece. But the total impact is $129,894 rather than the $173,000 that is stated there in, on the agenda. This is Geraldine Hull's response to me. Pilgrims, the pilgrims issue was an exemption associated with the vehicles which were valued in Titus County. They claimed that a portion of the vehicles which were used to haul live poultry and feed to the growers were exempt as implements of husbandry. Their claim stated that the poultry hauled at the processing plant represented farm products in the hands of the producer, and until they reached the kill floor, do not represent any form of processing. So therefore, the vehicles are exempt according to Section 11.161 as implements of husbandry, which is defined as machinery and equipment items that are used in the production of farm or ranch products or of timber, regardless of their primary design, and are considered to be implements of husbandry and are exempt from ad valorem taxation. Our attorneys did believe they had a claim which would be hard to defend in court. Several attorney general opinions, such as M. 632, O. 5091, V. 93, and V. 511, while these opinions deal directly with the farm products, the case history reflects farmers have prevailed in courts on equipment used to produce, haul, and harvest their product. Only upon the sale of the harvested and processed crop does taxation begin. With the magnitude of the fleet of vehicles they own, we are at the mercy of their providing us with the appropriate usage of each vehicle, which in turn would determine the taxability of that item. So that is Ms. Hull's response from the appraisal district. Nonetheless, I wanted you to know about this total dollar amount that has been settled, that we will be responsible for making up once the final paperwork is signed and the bills are submitted to the individual taxing entities. That will be our portion, roughly $130,000.
And that's over the last...
Immediately? As soon as the papers are all signed?
I would imagine so. But I know that they would certainly like to.
You're looking at 2009, 2010, 2011, and 2012.
Total of four years that this was in litigation.
What does Cindy want?
For a summer, Fred.
All right, guys, I don't know if there's a whole lot we can do about this, but again, I think that we need to go ahead and approve it.
I'm making motion with approval.
Motion by Commissioner Hockaday and second by Commissioner Riddle. All in favor of the approval of this settlement with Pilgrim's Pride for these four years, say aye. And there are no opposition. All right. Item number seven, considering possibly approved, travel in seminars. Item number one is from Deborah Abston, our district clerk. She would like to attend the 13th Annual Workshop for District Clerks Association in Horseshoe Bay, Texas. She indicates this training is mandatory. The dates of the training are October 1, 2, and 3. She would like to travel on the 30th, which is the day before, and return on October 3rd. Cost of registration is $30. She has requested four days of per diem, a total of 40 times four days, which I'll come back to in a moment. Total cost of hotel motel, $435. She will be carpooling, so there is no vehicle cost. She has asked for a total approximate cost of $625. As you will recall, about a month ago, we made an adjustment to our constable's request, limiting his per diem to one $40 per diem claim for each night away. We have September 30th, October 1st, and October 2nd, which match up with three days of training. It appears to me that this is the same situation, despite the fact she'll be traveling on the day before training, which is September 30th. I would think that it is appropriate that we limit the $160 per diem claim to $120 to match up with the discussion we had regarding Constable Johnson's claim. The next item is, or actually, the next two are from the sheriff's office. They would like to send Christie Reeves and Kamitra Johnson to correction officer training in Texcana. This is mandatory training between the dates of August 5th and August 20th. $180 each for the cost of registration. We're claiming no meals or hotel. They will take a county vehicle when they travel up there. Approximately total cost of training, $210, which includes a $30 test fee on top of the $180 registration. So those are actually two different requests. One is for Christie Reyes and one for Kamitra Johnson. So those three are the total of the request. And again, be specific as to what you would like to do on our district clerk's request here.
On the clerk's request, how far away are we looking at? Is she leaving the David Ford?
That's Austin. That's Austin.
You're looking at a six-hour drive. She has to be there what time the next morning?
I don't know the answer to that. I would imagine it would be a morning class. And here again, I think we need to practice what we preach. What have we done in the past? Call brought up specifically the point of one per diem for each night away. Is that the defining factor, or is the length of the travel the defining factor? I don't know.
Well, I know in Cleve's situation, the state, the money that he has in there is from the state that pays.
That is true. But we limited him nonetheless.
Make a motion we approve travel with that stipulation in there of just the $120 for Deborah.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that?
No.
I'm not.
Okay. Well, let's, this is a good time to discuss this situation here, because it's going to come up again, and everybody could potentially be impacted by this. I don't, I don't know why Call was, gave us that definitive policy, if that's not, you know, if this can be open to interpretation, we should decide how we're going to handle this now. Again, we have a situation where we've got to be at 8:00 in the morning training, we've got a five-and-a-half-hour drive. Is per diem for the day before appropriate? I certainly don't think you should be paying for breakfast, lunch, and dinner on the day of travel the day before the event.
And you think we do? Would you say, Mike, you think we should? I think we need, if a person leaves, has to be there the next morning. I think for, you can, you could, if they leave, like, 10, 9 or 10 o'clock, and they stop and eat, and then they stop and eat and go to their room and get settled in, they got to be there the next morning at 8:00? Yes. The whole $40? No. You can pro-rate that out. Not three meals, but two meals.
Any other comments on this? All right. Oh, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hinton. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
All right. Second by Commissioner Riddle. All those in favor of these three requests, with one modification here on the district clerks, to limit the per diem for three days to match up with three days of training and three days, or, excuse me, three nights. That is the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I will vote aye on that. Opposed?
No.
And we have two oppositions from Commissioners Fields and Hockaday. All right. Motion passes. Moving on, item number eight, approval of written reports of county officials. Again, our county treasurer is away with his staff at training in somewhere down on the... I'm treasurer's here, that's right. Treasurer is here, auditor's away with his staff, and they're down somewhere on the border. Was it Laredo that they went? Laredo. They had a long, long trip. Motion by Commissioner Hinton. I'll second the motion. All in favor of approving our oral and written reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and there are none. Item number nine, considering possibly approved our treasurer's report. Motion by Commissioner Hinton to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and there are none. Item number 10, approve budget amendments, and I don't believe there are any. We will move on to item 11, sign pay orders, approve payments.
Make a motion to approve our bills.
Motion by Commissioner Hockaday to approve payment of our bills.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hinton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and there are none. Closing comments. I'll start on my far right. Commissioner Riddle, anything that you'd like to add to tonight's meeting?
No.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Fields.
The only thing I'd want to announce, August 3rd, at the Tri-Lake Volunteer Fire Department, we're going to have Guam's Independence Day, and it'll start, they'll eat a meal around 4:00 to 6:00. There are going to be people performing there. Guam is territory in the United States, and we have a lot of residents from Guam that serves in our military, and we have a lot of people all over the state of Texas that will be coming to that function, and if you got, have a chance, like to come out and watch some area of kids perform, I think it would be worth your while. Really had a good time last year and looking forward to this year.
That's a Saturday.
It's August 3rd.
Tri-Lakes Volunteer Fire Department. Is that a fundraiser as well?
No.
No, not a fundraiser. Okay. Do you know what time that'll start?
It'll start, it'll start serving around 4:00, and then the program starts about 7:00 at the fire department.
Saturday, August 3rd. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Hinton?
I have nothing to-
Commissioner Hockaday?
I got a question. I was told that they were renting the senior meal center again. Is that correct?
That they were?
They were renting it out again. I don't know if that's right or wrong. I was just told that.
I'm not sure what you mean by they were renting it out.
Or parties and-
Oh, I don't know. I haven't heard about that.
Someone had told me they were in that.
Are they not supposed to be?
No, it went through court not to do that because of the damage that was done to it.
Who is the contact person over that? And I'll, I'll call them.
What's her name?
Beverly?
Beverly. Beverly Logan.
Okay.
I was told that they were renting it again, and it's not come through us to do that again, so I, you know, I don't know.
I will ask about that. I don't know, and it's the first I've heard.
It may not be true. I was just told that they were renting.
All right.
Since they were struggling a little bit money-wise and couldn't do it.
All right. Thank you again. Out at 7:00 tonight. Enjoy your evening. I'll move for adjournment.
Someone-
Motion by Commissioners Hockaday, and second by Hinton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.